Get everybody to take their seats, please. Good evening, welcome to tonight's city council meeting, December 2nd, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Ford.
Here.
Mayor Procham Teeter.
Here.
Councilmember Madera.
Present.
Councilmember Frank.
Present.
Councilmember Davis.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Councilmember Hughesman.
Present.
Councilmember Hurst.
Present.
Councilmember Wardiola.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, we're all here except for Councilmember Davis. I'm open for a motion to excuse Mr. Davis. Mr. Hughesman.
Motion to excuse Councilman Davis.
Mr. Teeter.
Second.
A motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. Now, if everybody in the audience and the council will please stand, join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, first item on the agenda is citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication. Is the time on our agenda for the public to address the City Council on Businesses and Affairs of the City? If you're here to recognize the outgoing council members or newly elected members being sworn in tonight, there will be a reception in the atrium following the organizational meeting. If you're here to speak on an ordinance or resolution that is not on the consent agenda, please wait until that item is called. The City Council is unable to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are before or may come before City Council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. See who we have here. Denise Kaza. Come on up to the podium, given three minutes to address the City Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Denise Kaza. I'm the Treasurer of AFSCME Local 1144. I work at the Bison Ridge Rec Center. With me I have former local President Alan Trudell. He's with Public Works, and Nick Hoxseller, he's our AFSCME representative for our local. So Mayor Ford, on behalf of AFSCME Local 1144, the Commerce City workers, we would like to thank you for your support of our union for the past seven years, and for your support of city employees for your entire council career. You have always been a champion for us, knowing the passion that we have for our jobs, our citizens, and encouraging us to strive for the best, to make the city an amazing place to live and work. Thank you for remembering where you came from and remaining humble. And thank you for caring about each of us, the Commerce City community and its future. It's been a pleasure working with you. Congratulations to the new City Council members. We hope the relationship that we have with the incoming Mayor and Council is as positive as our relationship with you. Thank you.
Thank you. South Adams County Fire District.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. With me I have our PR Director Maria Carvahal. On my left, we have our Admin Chief Ken Coger. Behind me, we have our Division Chief Fire Marshal Randall Wiggum. As you can see, we're in our Class A uniforms. That just shows respect and honor towards the council. We normally don't wear these but for special occasions, and we thought today would be a special occasion. We want to thank all you all for your support throughout the years, just to name a few. You know, we've had some hardships throughout, you know, the department has, and we've had some great, just great times in the fire department. You guys have had a lot of support for us, including impact fees, mil levy. You've watched our department go from volunteer to complete career, and you've supported us through it the entire way. And I can't thank you enough, Mayor, and City Council. Mayor Procham Rick Teeter, Steve Douglas, Councilman Douglas, and Councilman Steve Davis that's not here. We want to thank you all in the existing council now and the new members coming in. That support for the fire department is very appreciative, and we couldn't thank you enough. It's an honor to be the Fire Department of Commerce City, and we will continue to serve the community with pride and excellence. But I want to thank you very much for your services as Mayor. You've seen us go through a lot, and Rick, obviously, throughout forty years plus, has seen this department grow, and I appreciate the support.
Absolutely.
So for that, we have some certificates of appreciation and some challenge coins for you all, so.
Great. You can come on up, Maria. Thank you. While she's handing those out, I would make a request that Brian tries to get that parking lot figured out for you guys. My last chance to throw a little love your way.
Well, thank you, and thanks again for all the support you all have. We've been up here many times and have never been told no, so we appreciate all the support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Bruck? Is that right? Bruce, there you go, thank you. Bruce. Come on up.
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is the last time I'll be appearing before you. I've appreciated your courtesy with the issues we brought before you. Tonight, I'm going to give you an easy one. Again, recommending Lucy Molina for the upcoming at-large spot. Hope you take that seriously for the new council. Thank you.
Appreciate it, and I have to note that it will be the new council that will make that appointment. So I'll be looking as a resident, as will you. Thank you. Ronna Sanchez?
Ronna Sanchez, 10680 Waco Street, Commerce City. I just wanted to thank you for your service and for allowing me to participate in government here. I moved here about a year ago, and although sometimes I didn't feel very welcome, most of the time I did, and I just wanted to thank all of you.
Thank you. Sean Quavo?
Sean Quavo, Villages of Buffalo Run. Is the timer broken? Oh, yeah. What was I going to say? First off, I hope you all had a good holiday, and you know, I want to say, one of the things I'm thankful for is the opportunity that you all have given me over and over again to come up here and speak. Again, even though we don't agree on all the same things, the fact that you do this is very commendable. You know, a lot of people don't get the chance to speak to their leaders. And I'd also like to echo the notion that the upcoming council should appoint Lucy Molina in the vacant seat. With over twenty-one hundred votes, I know it's a little weird to compare votes across different elections or different, you know, elections in the, or different seats, but she got the fourth highest number of votes across the entire election. And I think that speaks to what the community wants, and it gives us an easy way to choose someone going forward. And of course, I would also like to echo that I hope that the future council, and those of you who are here and those of you behind me who are, will be sitting up here, take the opportunity to do what's right for our city when it comes to oil and gas. The stock price today of extraction oil and gas is a dollar forty-four. It continues to fall, and it consistently falls. Even with this ROA and all these protections that we've drafted, if they go under, and they, while they are drilling, it will leave us with holding the bag. So I hope you all do the right thing and do what's best to put the health and welfare and safety of the citizens of the city. Thank you so much, and thank you again.
Thank you. Curly Seller. Okay. Hurst, thank you. James Hayes.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Jim Hayes, 4908 Tower Road in Denver. I just wanted to come and say congratulations on your many years of service to Mr. Douglas, Mr. Davis, Mr. Teeter, and Mr. Ford. It was an honor to serve with you as a city staff person for five years. I can say genuinely that you always had the city residents and businesses in mind in every decision that you seem to make. Mr. Douglas, I enjoyed our federal legislative issues we were working on together, trips to Washington DC and solving some challenges there. Mr. Teeter, I think back to your stories in the fire service, and setting policy for the city is probably not as big a deal, but you definitely took it very seriously, but always with good humor as well. And you can call me and talk about baseball anytime you want.
Good, Jim. Thank you.
Mr. Ford, I just want to thank you. I mean, what an amazing career. A staff person, member of council, two stints as the mayor. I mean, your legacy is cemented in this city, and it is truly amazing record of service. I'll save some of my funny stories maybe for the reception, but you know, definitely when we were on some of our travels for city business, there was always seemed to be a little funny story of trying to get through security or things like that that you'd picked up in your travels. I think finally, I just wanted to say that I really, really sincerely appreciated working for Commerce City, and it was a testament to all of you and the great leadership you exhibited in my short time here, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Marie Trevino.
Come on, girlfriend.
Come on up. Alright, we'll see you at the reception then. So that takes us through our list. Is there anyone else in the audience that didn't get the chance to sign up on the citizen communication roster that wishes to speak? Come on up. Commissioner, glad to have you here tonight.
It is a pleasure to be here. Commissioner Eva Henry Thornton, Colorado. I want to thank all of you for the service that you give. I appreciated working with you. Rick, I'm going to miss you at Dr. Cog. You are the only one with a great sense of humor that you and I would have several side conversations about the people, especially Denver and Boulder.
You're right.
Yes. And Mayor, I always appreciated you being able to put away partisan politics and be able to actually work with the commissioners. I truly appreciate that. And Steve, or Councilmember Douglas, you're an amazing friend, and I'm going to miss you on the council. So thank you for your service. The only thing I have, you know, for the most part, commissioners and Commerce City always got along well. But we'll discuss marijuana later. You know? But we'll have that discussion. But all in all, I really appreciate all the work that everybody does here in Commerce City. Commerce City's changing. It's an amazing city. It's an incredible city. I love bragging about it when we go and talk about the municipalities in our communities. So thank you so much for all the service that you've given us.
Thank you, Eva.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry I'm a little bit late tonight. My name is Jim Cachero. I live at 10299 Sedalia Street, Commerce City. I'd like to congratulate each of the incoming and current serving council members, as well as the mayor and the incoming mayor. I'd like to say, I'd just like you to consider a short story, if you don't mind, if you'd indulge me. Twenty-seven years old I was when I was promoted to a district manager job with fourteen million dollars in annual revenue. Pretty young, wet behind the ears, so to speak. My biggest distributor took me in his office, and he threw keys on the desk. And he said, you know, he says, "I want you to think about something." He said, "There's fifty families that depend on me turning that key in that lock every day." And he says, "Every time you make a decision that's going to possibly negatively affect them, I want you to think about that." And Mr. Mayor, council, I did think about that. And many times, I made decisions that sometimes weren't really in my own best interest. And frankly, it probably cost me some money, probably cost me some position. Sometimes doing the right thing, as Lou Holtz would say, Dr. Lou, doing the right thing is not easy. Sometimes it's not clear. Sometimes it's not very popular. Oftentimes, it's not even in our own best interest, and yet it's still the right thing. I encourage you, as you serve, do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Alright, that will conclude our citizen communication portion of the meeting. Brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are six items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on the council wish to remove any of those items? Seeing none, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Hughesman?
Motion to approve the consent agenda by council seated.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frank.
Second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the titles?
Minutes of November eighteen, twenty nineteen. Resolution twenty nineteen one eight eight. Resolution authorizing additional professional planning and development technical support services for Safebook Colorado. Resolution twenty nineteen one two one. Resolution regarding posting locations for ordinances and public meetings. Resolution twenty nineteen one two two. Resolution canceling city council meetings that fall on officially scheduled city holidays. Ordinance V nine zero one nine. An ordinance vacating various rights of way on the property described on Exhibit A attached tier two and made a part care of, consisting of Court Place, Cleveland Place, Third Avenue and Third Avenue Alley located within four six two five East Sixty-eighth Avenue, City of Commerce City, Colorado. Ordinance Z nine five eight one nine. An ordinance rezoning from C two to public, the property described in Exhibit A attached tier two and made a part care of, located at six eight two seven, six eight seven one, six eight seven nine, and six eight nine five Brighton Road, Commerce City, Colorado, and amending the zoning map of the City of Commerce City, Colorado to reflect said rezoning.
Thank you. Titles have all been read. I have a motion and a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the consent agenda is approved this evening. Eight in favor, one excused absence. That brings us to the outgoing council recognition. Is there anyone of the outgoing members that have anything they would like to say? An opportunity to speak. Mr. Teeter?
I'll go first.
You go first. I'll go last.
Alright. Well, this is going to be great for me. I am happy to speak tonight. This is another one of those things that I have completed in my life, and I want to start with family. I want to start with my wife and my daughter and her, my granddaughters that are here. My son is on shift tonight in Denver in, he's on shift, he's a captain in Denver Fire Department, and so he couldn't make it tonight. But I want to thank them. They've stood behind me through all my endeavors, through my whole life. Whether it was when I was in Vietnam, or when I was in, on the fire department, or here on council now. So my wife and the family have stood behind me and supported me all the way, so thank you, baby. Okay, now I'm going to go over now what the last eight years that I, me, Sean, Steve Douglas, and, well, and Steve Davis had a little bit to do with this. But I'm speaking basically the last three councils that I had to deal with and Sean had to deal with. We completed a lot of things in these last eight years. And I'm going to run down them real quick, but I think they're very important to show the people here in the audience and the people at home what our term, our last eight years, what we did for this city. And I think it shows what you leave behind, what you accomplished, what you went through, and it's going to show the people what we did for this city for eight years, and I think we did a lot. First of all, the first thing we had on our plates, believe it or not, was oil and gas. First night we got signed in, we were dealing with oil and gas. It was when the oil and gas first hit Commerce City. We didn't have anybody in place. We didn't know how to address it. We didn't know what the right thing to do and the wrong thing to do was, so we had to go out and hire people to bring us up to speed and teach us and tell us the right way to protect our people. And it took a long time. We brought the right people in and staff. Staff worked on this, and I still think we came out today to what we need to be with oil and gas. And there again, it comes down to staff and the council. We don't give enough credit to staff. I'm going to say staff all night because they've been there for eight years for us. Without staff, nothing gets done. Next, we took on the Commerce City Police Department. When we came here, we were changing fire chiefs once a year, if not twice.
Police chiefs, police chiefs.
I'm sorry.
You're going to upset the South Adams.
Police chiefs. We were changing police chiefs, if not once, twice a year. There was something going on internally. We could not figure it out as a council. The city could not figure it out as a council. It was an internal thing that needed to be fixed. Our council had the desire or to go out above the city and bring in some professionals to address this situation. We went to Washington DC and had them bring in a team to investigate or go through our police department and try to figure out what the problem was, why we were always turning over police chiefs, and get to the bottom of getting this city back running as one big unit and not individuals in the police department. And we did that. We brought this city to where it's at today, where the police department has probably been working the best it's been working for many, many years, and has a tribute to our new fire chief, police chief, police chief, I'm sorry, chief. But that was big. That was big for Commerce City, and I think people need to know that. Next thing was the dog track. We got stuck with the dog track. The council before us bought the dog track. But today, we still have not got this thing up and running yet, but we are very, very close. We had to go through dismantling, tearing it down, making sure the ground was safe. Luckily, councilmen and staff, we took out an extra insurance policy on the dog track for the unknown that we might find. Low and behold, we found the unknowns. So the insurance policy paid off for us, but we are going to get this dog track done next year. We've already, we're at the finish line right now. We haven't a hundred percent finalized it yet, but we're right there knocking on the door, and you will see something happen starting next year. Boys and Girls Club. This was on the agenda before we came along, but it got turned down. We readdressed it. We knew this was something Commerce City needed. We knew our youth after school needed someplace to go and be taken care of while the parents were still working. This is a blue collar city, as you all know down here, and these parents have to work, sometimes both of them have to work. So we knew we had to get someplace for these kids to go after school, so we did the Boys and Girls Club on the dog kennel property. And of course, Suncor was the big, and a few other individual companies that got involved in this thing. That was a big deal for us also. Okay, and then we got to where we realized our money was not going far enough. And we had to do something to help the city. It took us two years to put together a program to take in front of the people, the public, to increase the sales tax by one cent. One cent doesn't sound like much, but we did it with, we went to the public, we did a lot of meetings, we educated the people what we needed, and they knew what we needed in this city. So they did pass the one cent sales cents tax, which allowed us today to put a half a cent towards infrastructure and the roads, and a half a cent towards recreation. put a half a cent towards infrastructure and the roads, and a half a cent towards recreation, as well as we addressed art in the, art throughout the city and the same thing. So, it was a big deal for Commerce City. Yes, we are one cent higher than the surrounding cities, but this is what we needed to move forward, to help Commerce City move forward and get the money back in our pockets. We put up the outside swimming pool. We put up five new parks on the north end. We did, like I said, the art. Now, if you go to these parks, you're gonna see pieces of art in these parks and throughout Commerce City. And that's bringing Commerce City out of the old ages into the new ages. We need to get our citizens to be proud of their parks and with different things to show the direction we're going in Commerce City. Tower Road, that was one of the other things that they approved that we used the money on. Tower Road was a two-lane highway and a main highway going into the airport. We chose to make that, turn that into a four-lane highway, and which we did. We also added on the Pena ramp from Tower Road onto Pena Boulevard, so the people passing through Commerce City and back into Commerce City could use the ramp to get up on the Tower Road and off Tower Road. Of course, that wasn't part of the 2K money, but it was still part of a big thing that we knew we had to complete for the people. The two rec centers, the brand-new rec center, if you go there and you see the new rec center, and I hope all of you have been up there, you see the art on the outside as well. And that brand-new, state-of-the-art rec center was another thing that we accomplished. We also completed totally remodeling this rec center down here on the south end and bringing it up to compliance for ADA and the codes that we needed to. Highway Two, this is one that you heard earlier this year where we named Highway Two after Mayor Sean Ford. Mayor Sean Ford was the person that went after Highway Two. He was the one that went to the state, and he was the one that got him to turn the state, turn the Highway Two over to Commerce City. Highway Two was always the last road plowed, always the last taken care of. And so, Mayor got that turned over to Commerce City, and we also turned that into a four-lane highway. You know, those are some great things that we have done. And there again, staff. Staff was involved with this right down the line. Everything we did, staff had to go out, figure it out, and do what we ask them. And if this city's gonna move forward with these new council people, remember, you gotta work with your staff. That's where it's at. If you're gonna get something done in the future, it's with the staff. The last thing is, I'm going to step back and talk about the fire department a little bit. I think this is something I wanna say tonight. I was on the volunteer fire department for thirty-four years. I have three other brothers. They were also on the fire department for thirty-four years, if not more. My brother Rock has been on there for forty years. We believe in Commerce City. The Teeter name believes in Commerce City. We have been involved for many years. One brother was on the school board for eight years. There was three of us were fire chiefs at one time. We took our turn, three years apiece. When I retired, I was the fire chief at the Rocky Mountain Arsenal. So, I was doing fire department every day, whether I was getting paid for it or I was getting volunteered for it. And at the end of my career, thirty-four years, I was on the board of directors for thirteen years for the fire department, and so was my brother Rock. So, we have been involved with this city, and we believe in this city. And we hope it still keeps going in the direction it's going. We're a hundred percent behind it. And, you know, I'll give you an example. My brother Rock and I both had over thirteen thousand fire calls on the volunteer fire department. That's how much we were dedicated to this city. And at that, after tonight, it'll be twenty-four straight years that a Teeter has been on city council. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Dave, you have anything?
Uh, yes. First of all, I wanna thank my family for being here. Trying to keep things straight here. Being my big support for the last eight years, things have been challenging for the city. We brought a lot of good things because we all worked together. You know, every council member that I've worked with, like Rick said, there's been several of them. And my thing was to, not only for us to be challenged, but to challenge each other to make us better what we do. And that is, when it comes to representation of our citizens, that we're actually doing the job, asking those tough questions and answering too. And sometimes, that's not easy. Sometimes, you don't always have the right answer, or if the people hear the correct answer, it may not be the answer they wanna hear. And so, Rick has said a lot. I mean, we've done a lot. I mean, I'm proud, the eight years that I served. I ran for mayor because I was termed out. But to me, this was a job, being elected official. It's not something just you show up and just be a public figure. It was going through different policies and making sure when I left, that Commerce City was in better than when I came in. Those five projects in five years, the ability to have one percent sales tax. There's a lot of things that happened, but you can't do it alone. You have to have the council that you're served with behind you. We've had some challenges. The big one, you know, and still going forward, is gonna be oil and gas. But I do appreciate the citizens listening to what our needs are, because that one percent sales tax will not sunset, but it's also additional funds that the city can use to remain flush and not go into the red. I wanna thank my wife for... Sorry. I've been there for me. I wanna thank the citizens of Commerce City for giving me the opportunity to serve the last eight years. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. I do have a letter to read from Mr. Davis. Couldn't be here this evening and ask that I read this in his absence. Steve, and many of you probably don't know this, but Steve has had some extremely trying times lately. He lost his father. He was the only child, adopted at that, took care of his dad after a major car accident. He's the chief of police for Mountain View. Was dealing with his having to put his dog down and stuff, all at the same time of this election. And so, I tried to reach out to him a couple of times a week, and he told me he just had so much going on at the city as a police chief and still is struggling to get through some of the issues that he's dealing with, that he didn't wanna be here tonight. So, he asked me to read this. So, he says, due to obligations at the police department, he's unable to be here. He would first like to thank the citizens of Commerce City who have graciously allowed him to serve as the Ward Four council member since August of twenty eighteen. During this time, he had the opportunity to serve with some amazing people that make our city so great. Our staff are second to none, and every one of them should be commended for the efforts and hard work that they have and continue to put in to keep our city moving ahead. I would also like to thank the current board members, who have also helped me navigate through some tough times, both professionally and personally while serving. All of them have given time away from their families and daily lives to address issues most people don't ever want to face. The decisions were not easy, and responding to the citizens of this community, whether they believe you were right or wrong, sometimes feels personal, but the decisions must be made, and I believe I did the best that I could have done. For the incoming members of this council in particular, Susan Noble, who is replacing me in my seat in Ward Four. Keep in mind that the race was very close, meaning you still must be accountable to those that did not vote you in. All of you must now be on the other side of the podium and prove to the other half of those citizens why your decisions are made, and the scrutiny of each of those decisions will define your position, and you will be held accountable for each one. I have no doubt that all of the new members will do what it takes to move our community in a direction that the citizens want it to go. You cannot and must not have a personal agenda as a council member. If you do, you are doing a disservice to yourself and the community, and the people will not stand for it. I wish each of the new and current members good luck in the years to come. Again, thank you for the opportunity to serve you all. It has been one of the greatest honors of my life. Sincerely, Steve Davis. So, I wish Steve could be here tonight. This is, you know, something that I am by far ready to end my time on this council. However, it's tough because it has been most of my life. I was hired in nineteen ninety and worked for the city in the Health Works Department for almost ten years. And I learned as an employee, most important asset that the city has is its employees. You know, we take for granted a lot of times, the guy that's plowing the street, police officer that's writing you a ticket. And anymore in this society, we've lost a lot of civility. And I don't even know who would want to be a police officer. I don't, I don't wanna be up here anymore because of it. I will tell you, I've had my share of phone calls. Tell you, I got a call, this been during the summertime. Lady called me, three o'clock in the morning. And the one thing that I always did was, I always have had my cellphone number posted on the city's website, so that people could get ahold of me. And this lady called my house, or called my cellphone, sitting next to my bed, three o'clock in the morning, and I answered the phone, and she said, is this the mayor? And I said, yeah, how can I help you? She said, well, an airplane just flew past my house and woke me up. And she said, this is true stuff. She said, if I have to be awake, so do you. I don't know how people come up with that kind of stuff. Couple weeks ago here, I was preparing for a council meeting, meeting with staff, and I got a phone call, and the guy left me a message. He was sitting, waiting for a train, and figured he would use the time in the best manner possible by searching the internet and getting my phone number to call me and let me know how I made him late getting home from work. And that I need to start doing my job and build overpasses over all of the railroad tracks in Commerce City. Now, I'm gonna tell you, that's one hell of a lot of railroad tracks. They're only fifty, sixty million dollars apiece. So, money's gotta come from somewhere. But I think what most people don't understand is the money comes out of your pocket, and there's only so much to go around. You want restaurants? So do I. I live here. You want a movie theater? Bowling alley? So do I. Only difference is, is that I don't have anybody to complain to. You all do. This is hard. We have, those of us up here have spent a long time together. We haven't, haven't always agreed. But I do think we've always respected one another. I hope that continues. I first want to thank the residents for allowing me this time. My family. And you all see these little kids that are crying? So, when I got on this council, that's the age my kids were. Thanks. Who thought of that? I told myself all day long I wasn't gonna do this. But the amount of birthday parties, anniversaries that I spent here, which I shouldn't have. To those that are coming on to this council, I have but one request. Make sure your family comes before the city. That's important. Because without your family, you don't stand a chance at getting through this job. I wanna talk about my colleagues. Start with Rick. Rick has been an outstanding mayor pro tem. Rick has been an outstanding mayor pro tem. The only way I could get him to be my mayor pro tem when it was tough, was to agree not to miss any meetings. He told me, he said, "Only way I'll be your mayor pro tem is if you promise you don't miss any meetings because I don't want to have to run one." So, I didn't like that. In, in eight years, I missed one, right Rick? I put that up against any other mayor in the state. But thanks, Rick. Me and Rick already have it figured out, Monday nights, we're just gonna go drinking. I want to say something about Steve Davis. I know he's not here, but one of the most genuine, good human beings you'd ever want to meet. You may not have agreed with him. Hell, half the time I didn't. I wanted to poison the prairie dogs? He didn't. We still get along fine today. You don't have to hate somebody because you have a difference of opinion. But Steve Davis was a really good guy and a good guy to have on this council. A person that you could talk to at any time. He's the kind of guy that would be there to help you regardless of the situation, regardless who you were. He's that kind of guy. And he will be my friend for a long, long time, whether he's a part of the city or not. He's, and, and that's the, the beauty of this, is you meet a lot of really good people and you build really good relationships. And Steve Davis is one of those people that I consider a very true friend. So, I appreciate the service that he has given the city as well as Mr. Teeter. And Rick's been a lot of fun to have on the council. And I have to tell you, when I first got on the council, I was a city councilman at large for four years and I served under Mayor Casey Hayes. And Casey is the kind of guy that would call you every week and want to know how you were gonna vote at the meeting. He didn't want any surprises and if you weren't gonna vote the way he wanted you to vote, why he was gonna talk you out of how to, of the way you were gonna vote. He was a good guy. I have a lot of respect for Casey. But I never have done that to my council. There's not a single person that I've served with that could tell you, I called them up and asked them to vote one way or another. I always let them vote the way they felt necessary for the position that they held. And so, I'm glad that I never asked anybody to, to vote in, in one manner or another. Mr. Douglas, Mr. Douglas, I will always consider you my friend. You have been a really good person to be around. It always helps when you don't have the same opinion, to have a rational discussion with somebody to identify whether you are thinking in the right manner or not. And although me and Mr. Douglas don't, didn't agree on a few things, he's still a very honorable person. I, I respect him and will continue to consider him my friend. He played a, a big role in this community. I would tell you, he's the one guy that probably had more face time with the public than anybody else up here when they went to King Supers. So, he, he could come in and tell you, "This is, this is what I'm hearing." Actually, I'm kind of surprised that Mr. Douglas hasn't been inundated at King Supers with complaints about the trash not being picked up. All right. I think we all have, Steve. And you know what? After tonight, that's not our problem anymore. Right? Which I'm looking forward to. Nicole, Nicole is now two years into her term. She's been a good council member. She's been going through some tough times personally, but she shows up and does her job for the residents and for that, I appreciate you. Keep doing what you're doing. Mr. Delahoya. Oscar. I always, I've, I've always teased with Oscar ever since he got on council and he's, he's really a good dude. He went to school with my son, which is hard for me to, to have to deal with in the head. But he's, he's a pleasure to have on here because he's an accountant. He understands numbers. There's oftentimes where he said, "No, no, no, wait a minute. I think you have this wrong." And had staff rethink something and come up with some new ideas. But Oscar brings a lot to the table. And again, I haven't always agreed with him, but he's a good person. And that's what matters when you get up here. Doesn't matter how much you know, it matters whether you're a good person. You want good things to happen. You want good things for the city. Jose. Jose is one of my favorite guys. I'll tell you, I was scared to death to have to deal with Jose. I heard nothing but terrible things. When, when that election was going on two years ago, I had people coming to me and they're going, "Oh, my God. You have no idea what kind of problem you're gonna deal with. This guy has been nothing but a troublemaker, a problem child. Nobody gets along with him." And I will tell you right now, I don't know who couldn't get along with him. Just a genuine, good person. Don't always agree with him. He doesn't always agree with me. But I could tell you right now, we walk out the door, we hang our hat in here and we leave, we leave those things in this room. Otherwise, it'll eat you up at home. But Jose, matter of fact, I even, you know, I did this whole no shave November and I decided over the weekend I was gonna shave. And when I was shaving, I thought, "Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shave and leave my mustache long, just for Jose, just for tonight." And nobody else even knows this, but Jose came to me after I had shaved one time and had my mustache big. He came, he came to me and he goes, "Man, I wish I'd go back to that mustache." Said, "I really liked that mustache." He said, "You don't even see that anymore. That's something from the seventies." He said, "He said, 'That's, that's what we all knew as a porn star mustache.'" So, just for all of you, I'm wearing my porn star mustache tonight. Craig Hurst. Been in the trucking industry and doing what he does from the state perspective on trucking. He brings a huge piece to this council. The one story that sticks in my mind is, is about Craig permitting a bunch of trucks to haul wind, wind generating equipment to eastern Colorado and what the cost to do that was and that there was a reroute. And just the cost of the reroute was twenty years worth of life of, of, of operating these windows. Whoa! Man down, man down. Long as she's okay. Steve? She's flexible? She's good? But Craig, Craig's, Craig's a good person and the one thing is, you know, Craig, it shocks me, his, his family's right there with him, his wife and, and two little girls and I love to see him all the time on Facebook. I, I, I hope that Craig doesn't sit up here until his kids are grown and his grandkids are running around out there. Do yourself a favor, I will tell you, you will go broke doing this job. I learned that the hard way. There's a lot of people out there that think that, "Man, I had it good, that I was, I was getting some here and there." I will tell you right now, I was borrowing it if I was getting it. But Craig's a, a, a good dude, will do really good things for the city as, as he continues to grow. Benjamin Hughesman. I have a lot of respect for Ben and I think Ben, he has a, a great opportunity here to, to guide this city. And I'll be interested to see how he does. But the one thing that I will offer every one of these council members and all the new council members, if you want any historical, historical advice, I've been here since dirt. I know where most of the bodies are buried and we'd be glad to share that with you. But to Ben, you and my Christmas light turner on Tristan out there, hopefully I, I can stay friends with you guys and stay in contact and come over, try some of those pork butts that I saw Tristan injecting the other night. You're a good family, you're good, you're, you're, you're good human beings and I, I want you, as well as the rest of this new council, to be very successful. I don't have any hard feelings leaving, which is good. There's nobody up here that I dislike for any purposes. Have different, of course, we have different opinions, but I, I live in this community too and I wish the city well. I want the city to do good. I have to say some thank yous to the staff. Brian McBarum, you know, we've, we've been through hard times together. We've sat and contemplated what comes next. But Brian, you're, you're a good person and, and you've been good for the city. I've worked with a lot of city managers over the years and you, you've done a good job. I want you to keep doing that. I know Roger's not here, but I've been, I've, I've worked with Roger a long time. And Roger, as well, is a, a good human being and just wants good things to come to the city. So, I know Roger's unprobably a very well-deserved vacation, but to Roger and his family, you know, I know he's, he's probably contemplating retirement, what comes next for him, but he was an asset for the city for many, many years. He, I always, I always would explain to somebody about Roger. They'd, they'd say, "Oh, you know, how about this Roger guy?" And I said, I would tell them, I said, "You know what? When it comes to Roger, he has a downfall, but he has some good side to him as well." Roger's the one guy, didn't matter day or night, always seemed to answer the phone and immediately jump on whatever I, I needed. And so, I would always direct people that needed something quick, "Call Roger. Here's his number." And so, I, I, I fed him a lot of, of issues. But on the downside, Roger was the finance director for many, many years and he, he was very good at what he did. And I would always tease that sometimes he would spend too much time trying to pick up the dimes and nickels that he was stepping over the dollar bills and told him he needed to loosen up and sometimes you have to spend a little bit to make a little bit more. But he was very prudent with the tax dollars and I respected him very much for that. But he's the first one that'll tell the city council, "You don't have it, don't spend it. You need, you need twice as much as what they say you need in reserves." And, and in, in the sixteen years that I've served in an official capacity, as an elected official, we've always had a balanced budget. We've never, never overspent. We've always kept our reserves where they need to be. We did go into debt at times, but we also paid off debt early. So, Roger helped us with that. Troy Smith. Former chief of police. Think his, his new position suits him better. One of the guys that I'm, I've always been able to sit down and talk to. We, you know, I, I, I just recently, this last, last trip that I went on to DC, I was with Troy and I, I, I won't forget it, we were sitting in the airport with Commissioner Odoricio. And it was odd because the commissioner looked at Troy and, and I was sitting right beside Troy and he said, "Hey, you know what? I hope the next guy that gets elected as mayor of Commerce City doesn't have the power that Sean Ford has." And I, I was shocked when he said it and I was like, "You know, I'm sitting right here." He goes, "Yeah, I know." And Troy goes, "What do you mean? He doesn't have any more power than the next guy or the next guy or the next guy." But the, the good news is, is that I had some respect within the region to be able to, to push some of those issues that needed to be pushed. And the downside for Steve is, trust me, I don't think Benjamin's gonna lay down on the power for anybody. So, you just, you know what? When you gotta be tough, Ben, let him have it, right? And I know you gotta get with Eva later and talk to her about the marijuana. That's good for you. I'm gonna take her to lunch and talk about something else, but not marijuana. Robert Sheasley. Robert, you know, I only had one city attorney, or we as a council, had one city attorney and it was Bob Gaylor forever and ever and ever. And I have the highest respect for Bob Gaylor and I, it was tough for me to have to bring someone new in and learn a, a new, a new person, a new style. But Robert's been very good about keeping the council updated on what's going on and, and what's happening with litigation and, and taking care of the council's desires. And I think he'll continue to be a good city attorney and, and so, Robert, good luck to you. I know you have a, got to watch the first couple of years of your daughter growing up and I think one of my favorite things is, he brought this king cake from Louisiana for one of our council study sessions and we were all trying to find some baby that they cooked in there. Unfortunately, it was Nicole that found it. So, good for you, Nicole. I don't know what that means. Hopefully, it's not the same as some of the other things that when you catch the poke or whatever. Lisa. Lisa's no longer with the city, but she's in the back of the room there. Lisa was the city manager's secretary. She also acted as the secretary for the city council. She was the person that always made all of our flight arrangements and everything else. She's always the person that would call and go, "You know what, mayor? I hate to have to call you all the time, but you need to turn your receipts in. You have to turn them in because I can't give you your money back if you don't turn them in." But really, a, a great young lady that has really done well for herself and I, I hope that her, her new career will find her as much praise as, as what she has coming from the city. One person that doesn't get mentioned very often, and I have to mention her, she's, she's done an outstanding job and, and she's quiet, she stays, she stays back and does her thing, is Kelly Farmer. Kelly always sets up the dinners and she, she helps with those travel arrangements and everything else. And it was really interesting, one time, I think it was about a year ago, maybe two, she had, gave me a Christmas gift and I was really kind of taken back because it was odd, not something normal and she's so quiet. She had given me this stone cowboy that was about, I don't know, sixteen, eighteen inches tall. And I thought, "Wow, that's really nice." You know, makes me feel bad. I can't go out and buy all the employees something, you know, at that value, but for, for her to give that to me. And then I think about a year went by and I didn't know, you know, I didn't know why. I kept this cowboy in my office and it since has now been moved to my home. But Kelly came to me and she said, "Hey, you know, mayor? I don't know if you know about that gift that I gave you for Christmas." And I said, "No, it's really nice. I like it. It'll fit with the decor I have at home." She said, "Well," she said, "you know, my mom and dad both passed away and I had to get rid of all of their stuff." But this is the one thing that I couldn't part with. But this is the one thing that I couldn't part with because it always sat on my mom's piano. And she said, I didn't know what to do with it. It didn't fit anything in my house and, and she said, but it reminded me of you. So I knew that you would put it somewhere, um, where it would always be able to, to be out in a view of people and, and everything else. And I thought, you know, that was, really meant something to me because it meant something to her. So, um, Kelly, as much as she's quiet and, and takes care of things, a lot of times she goes unnoticed. I wanted to make sure, um, she was noticed this evening. So, thank you Kelly. Um, Annette, I think you're gonna be a good secretary. I, I think that, uh, um, as long as Ben doesn't beat you up too bad, uh, you'll make it. But, uh, so far, uh, seems like a very, a, a very fun person and I, I think that she will do good in that role. I need to talk real quick about the police department. Um, the police department and, and I had requested, I don't know, six months ago or something, and I wanted to have a special recognition of, uh, the police department and I wanted to have the fire department here as well, um, to, to thank all of our first responders and, and what they do. Um, it didn't get put together. I, I wished it would have, um, but I actually, uh, was requesting to invite the chief of police from Platteville. And the reason is, is because I got pulled over by the chief of police in Platteville. And, uh, um, I, you know, he pulled me over, highway 85, as all of you know, is wall-to-wall trucks and, and, and cars at certain times of the day. And, uh, there were these two cop cars sitting in the, in the median. They were off the road quite a ways and they, they weren't, they weren't doing anything. They didn't have anybody pulled over. They weren't out of their vehicle, but I still went past them, um, and not at a high rate of speed. I, I had slowed down. I went past them and I didn't move over a lane. And he pulled me over just to tell me that there's a law and you have to move over a lane if there's emergency equipment. And I thought, you know, I would agree with that and it would be a whole lot different if there was a car in front of him that he was getting out of the car to go write him a ticket, but, uh, I, I felt I was safe and, and I thought, you know, um, just out of the respect that guy pulling me over, um, to make sure that his employees were safe, uh, to teach people a lesson of what not to do, um, I wanted him to come to the council meeting so that I could thank him in front of our police department for looking after the safety of his employees. So, um, one of these days I'll make it down to Platteville and go to a council meeting and I'll say something. But, uh, I have become, um, good friends with many, many of our police officers over the years. Um, like I said, I started working in, in the city in 1990, so a lot of those police officers have came and left. Um, the, uh, the Michael Johns and, and the older officers, um, they're, they're no longer around, but, uh, uh, we have some really good talent in our police department. Um, Rich Rodriguez was a, he, he owned a pizza, a pizza place in Brighton. And he needed to get back into police work, but he was a police officer in New York. And he came to me and he goes, you know, I was there eating pizza one night and he said, you're the mayor, right? And I got to know him and he said, hey, well, you put in a good word for me. I'm trying to get back into the police business. And I put in a good word for him and it seemed like some time went by, but he got hired part-time to take care of some like, um, old cases and stuff like that. Um, but since they, the, the city has hired him full-time and, and he's, he's a great guy and he's, he's been taking care of a lot of the sex assault cases and stuff like that. Um, but, uh, Rich, um, is, is just a, a, a really a good human being. And if you get to know who these officers are, um, they want you to be safe. They want our families to be safe. Um, Brad Kittle, in the back of the room. Brad, uh, is the guy that probably pulls more people over on highway two than anyone else. And I could tell you, what I've seen on Facebook is if Brad Kittle has to get out of his car, you're gonna get a ticket. Uh, Brad? So don't make him get out of his car. But, uh, um, Brad's a good guy. Uh, you know, we have a lot in common. Um, a lot of these employees go hunting and fishing and do the same kind of things I do. Um, so thank you, uh, to the police department. Laura, all these years, you are, uh, city clerk of the year. It's awesome. And, uh, she has young grandkids and stuff and she's just done an outstanding job and, uh, I, I don't know what your plans are in the future, um, but you do, you do good right here where you're at, uh, but I wish you and your family the best as well. Um, but I, I got the fire district, the water district, the school district, Adams County, all of the other agencies. I have to tell you, one of the most important parts of this job, I don't have any more authority than anybody else that sits up here. The only thing I get to do is run the meetings. But I would tell you, you can't be successful unless you have a good relationship with the other government entities within this community, with the county. You have to be able, uh, to come to terms and, and work together. Um, hasn't always been good with all of them, but, uh, the school district, I think, um, has a huge opportunity, um, to get a lot better, um, than what they have been. Um, the water department, of course, you know, my dad managed the water department for, for near 50 years and, uh, we always had a good relationship and, and then there was some new management, it, it wasn't so good. And I have to tell you right now, I think that the relationship the city has with the, uh, water department's pretty good. Um, but I think there has to be compromises made on both sides to, uh, to continue to encourage development. If our fees are too high and, and, uh, we're charging too much for our services, uh, to bring people into this community, it'll be really hard, uh, to create, um, new development. And that goes to those restaurants that a lot of people have been wanting to see. Um, the fire department. Thank you guys for what you do. Um, it's the one entity that I have seen really grow over the last several years. Um, Kevin, you've done a great job of moving that fire department forward. Um, and I know you didn't do it by yourself. You have a lot of help to, to make that happen. Um, but, uh, thank you for what you guys do. And I, every time I see Kevin and walk into his office, I always tell him the same thing that I tell the water district, same thing that my dad always told me, uh, when he was the manager of the water district. We have the same customers. The same people that are paying taxes to the city, are paying their water bill to the water department, are paying, um, their taxes to the fire department and, and the same, we have two different school districts, right? So if we can collectively reduce those costs, it makes a difference. The end, the end, the end beneficiary is the resident. So, um, we should always strive to try to keep our cost down amongst ourselves. If the water department does a street cut, we shouldn't charge an arm and a leg for them to patch the road that they cut because when we need a water tap, they're gonna, they're gonna make us pay dearly for that too. And it, why, why charge each other so much when the end, the end person that pays is our residents? So, uh, keep that in mind. It's a, uh, a way to help save our taxpayers some money. Um, there are a couple of people here tonight, uh, that have stuck with me, um, and then I'm gonna, I'll end this. Marty Flom, former commissioners in the back. Um, the reason I say Marty, uh, Marty is one of those people who have been a true friend. And I would tell you, I have watched people over the years go, uh, look, I don't like that guy, whatever, I don't care. You can think whatever you want of Marty. I think he's a great guy, but he's a true friend and I'll tell you why. I did this job for eight years. Then I went out of office for four and then I came back. Well, guess what? In that four years, I got very few phone calls. I didn't have the David Fosters and the Mark Campbells and those people calling me going, hey, how you been? You know, there's a lot of people that need you. And then there are people that don't need you that are your friends. Marty is a friend. Leonard Dietz. Leonard Dietz, um, he was my boss while I was at Public Works. Um, Leonard Dietz is the one who told me, you can never get a five on your, uh, evaluation process because a five is perfect and only God is perfect. Keep that in mind when you're doing the next city manager evaluation, would you please? Um, but, uh, Leonard, uh, Leonard was that thorn in a lot of the staff's neck and I'm glad. And the rest of the employees should all be very thankful for what Leonard has done because Leonard was that guy who stuck his own neck out to make sure you had retiree healthcare, to make sure, um, your benefits weren't taken away. So, uh, Leonard has always been a true friend. Talk to him all the time. So thanks Leonard. Um, Renee Bullock, who's here, another true friend. Um, you know, these are the people that I would invite to my house to barbecue with. They are truly my friends. Um, given this past election, it doesn't matter what, I, I don't care, um, what you think of Renee or don't think of Renee. I will tell you Renee is a outstanding human being. Um, good person, good heart. He doesn't want, I don't think, anything different than anybody else up here, which is good things for this community. And, um, I have to tell you, everything happens for a reason. And the first thing I did when Renee lost this last election, and I supported him all the way through it. I went to him and I congratulated him. I told him, um, it wasn't meant to be and he didn't want to be here anyway because we have a lot of things to do. And, uh, the history that his wife knows and what she's done for this community with the historical society, um, there's a lot of great families that have helped grow this community. Herb Hast, the Mitchells, um, you know, there's, uh, there's, there's countless number of people, the Applehans family, um, they have all helped grow this to what it is today. None of us would have what we have if it wasn't for those original people that saw vision. And whether I want or support oil and gas, I still want health and safety of this community. And it's not up to me. There's not been one permit to drill a well in 16 years that I've served on this council ever given. I don't know if there will. I don't know if there won't be any permits given. It's not up to me. And I don't care that it's not up to me. I care that everything happens for a reason and I'm interested to see what the next generation of leadership does for this community. There's been some bad things happen in this community. I mean, I got hammered, uh, and still do all the time overtaking a piece of property at highway two and 72nd avenue to improve the safety of this turn lane. And this lady blames it all on me that I had promised her we'd never take the property. But I would tell you right now, there are nine people on this council. I can't promise anything that four other people won't promise with me. And we condemned that piece of property. That was a unanimous vote by this council. And I will tell you that there is nothing that I personally have done to help this community because it always has taken at least four other council members. This isn't an I situation. I didn't do anything. We did a lot. We, this council, we, the council before that. Dominic Moreno's in the audience, one of my mayor pro tips. Now Senator, um, don't always agree with each other, but I respect the man and he's my friend. But Dominic knows, nothing happens here good for this community without five people agreeing to it. Nothing happens bad for this community without five people agreeing to it or agreeing not to do something. So please don't ever blame one person because it's a majority and that's why this government was set up the way it's set up. We just went through a horrible issue of being terrible people for killing prairie dogs. I have to tell you, one of the first things as mayor, when I first got on as mayor back in the early 2000s, I had to go pick up a petition signed by over a hundred residents to eradicate all of the squirrels in the city limits of Commerce City. It's a true story. And, uh, this, this elderly gentleman, um, begged me to kill them all, every squirrel in the city limits. And I said, I can't do that. Some people like the squirrels. And he said, yeah, that crazy old lady next door to me feeds them. And so when you put yourself into that position, you have to step back and go, okay, so what am I supposed to do? This guy's got a hundred signatures that he wants me to kill all these squirrels and the lady next door is feeding them. Well, they're wild animals and, and we didn't have any jurisdiction over the, those squirrels on private property. I spent the day getting him information about how to squirrel proof his property. I got him the phone numbers to the Boy Scouts of America to have him come out and help patch his eaves because I wanted to help him, but I didn't want to not, I didn't want to take away the pleasure of the lady next door either. And it seems like that's every decision that we've had to make. Um, and all I've always tried to ever do is serve the majority. And sometimes the minority gets much louder than the majority, but you still have to do your best to take care of the majority. I don't have a single decision that I have made or vote that I've made that I would undo. I, I will tell you that it is by far not a very easy job, um, to go from having people want, wanting me to kill the squirrels and then to having people be just hateful about the fact that we have to deal with a prairie dog situation and the plague and what the plague can turn into and the impact it could have to the refuge and, and the black-footed ferrets and everything else that goes along with it. Um, Craig asked me, he says, Sean, did you see this? They, they're wishing me dead. They're wishing me the worst form of cancer and on and on and on. He says, what should we do? I said, well, you know what? You want to take your mind off that? Come with me, we'll get my 300 windbag and we'll go take a few out, out here, out, out in the, on the prairie. Because it's okay. I saw today that there's a group wanting to ban glue traps for mice because it's, um, bad, it's, it's, it's a horrible thing for the mouse to go through. Um, I will tell you, if, if things aren't kept in check, they will overrun you and, uh, you take somebody who has a, had a mouse infestation, I could tell you right now, they ain't gonna care about how, how they get rid of them. And I can guarantee you one thing that will never, ever happen is a prairie dog make his home on my property. This is not gonna happen. It won't. And, you know, I, man, I go out, I, I hunt and, and stuff and I'm ethical about how I do it. Um, and, and I, I went on a little rant a while back. Um, I finally get my opinion back and I do support oil and gas, but I support it in a safe manner. The good news is, is I'm not the decision maker. You guys don't have to worry about how I'm gonna cast my vote. Um, the downside is, is I watch society today and I watch people trying to muscle other people. People are rude to each other in the grocery stores, on the highways. Um, the reason this is not fun anymore is because I don't even know there's a pothole until I see that I'm not doing my job when one shows up on social media. With social media, and I was talking to Steve Davis today, the chief of, of Mountain View. And I said, let me tell you something, Steve, it really bugs me that all I see on Facebook anymore and social media, which I, I do my best to stay off of, all I see is how crime has gotten worse. Look how bad Commerce City is. Look at how terrible things are. And to tell you the truth, it's better than it was. It's better than it was. There's just- There's just now a sampling board for everybody to tell you everything that has happened. We didn't know when there was a rollover and the fire department took care of it. We didn't know when there was, uh, 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 an incident with the police department and they had to deal with some criminals. Um, so we're creating our own, our own demise by, by having to, uh, watch and, and wade through this. I personally think Commerce City is in a better place. And when I talk to residents, especially in the south, they tell me things are bad. Well, what's bad? Well, look at the neighbor's house down the street. That used to be the Johnson's place, they had a Mac unit landscaping. Now look at it. Well, they're not violating any codes, but I will tell you, um, it's not the Johnson's anymore. They sold their house once it got to be worth three hundred thousand dollars. Someone else that moved in here, they didn't grow up in this community. They didn't have that same pride that the Johnsons had. That changes. That, that affects those of us that live here. The best park in this whole community is Pioneer Park. We redid the rec center, there's a lot of good things happening. But income levels, demographics drive economics. You want a restaurant in the southern portion of Commerce City? I want one down here too. But some things have to change. You can't have that without a customer base. And you ain't going to have a customer base without some new housing. It, it is, it is a catch twenty-two. And I'm glad that this council gets to have to deal with some of that, because I've dealt with my share. All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop there, I could go on all night long and I, I'm not going to. Um, I just, my main, my main purpose was to thank my family and to, uh, thank the residents of Commerce City and to thank the staff, um, because they're, uh, doing a great job. And I, I want to wish well to all of the new council members. I want you to achieve everything that's in your heart, um, for this community. And, uh, especially, uh, I want to, uh, wish goodwill upon, um, Ben and his leadership. Thank you. All right. Mr. McBroom?
Mr. Mayor, we wanted to provide an opportunity for other council members to make remarks, and then we'll, uh, we'll hand out some parting gifts.
Then that's what we'll do. Mr. Madera?
Well, lucky for everyone, I'm not a man of many words, so, uh, we'll keep this brief. But I just want to tell everyone that's on the outgoing council that it's been an honor serving with you guys. And, you know, I've learned something from each and every one of you, from the mayor, how to lead from the front, and it's always, you know, we, you know, everything good that we do, it's, we staffed this. And when something doesn't go well, you know, that's on our shoulders and we own up and we're accountable for that. So, I'll take that with me and, uh, you know, try to imitate that to the best of my ability. Uh, Mr. Davis, you know, I always tell him that I want to be like him when I grow up, because he's just one of the most genuinely good guys that you'll ever meet. He has one of the best hearts and he always wants to do well for everyone and he puts himself out there, you know. It only makes sense that he's a police officer. To Mr. Douglas, you know, he taught me to challenge the norm and stand up for what you believe in, you know, at all costs, and you've always done that and represented the people well and, you know, I respect that. And Mr. Teeter, the guy likes to party. He taught me how to keep things fun, no matter what the situation is, how bad it is. You, uh, go talk to Rick and you'll get a laugh and a good story probably, so. And I've always appreciated that and, you know, it, it really does make all the difference when you're around so much negativity, you know, as the mayor's been speaking, and you have someone like Rick on the council, you know, they'll, they'll bring you back up and, you know, you'll have a good laugh and you're able to, to get back and, and fight the good fight. So, I appreciate that, Rick. Thanks again, guys, I'm going to miss you guys. Ben, congratulations. Look forward to working with you as mayor and all the new council members, welcome.
Thanks, Oscar.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Frank?
All right, um, so I did want to say also thank you. It's been a really great two years working with all of you. Um, so I'll just start with Steve Davis. I do very much appreciate Steve Davis's support, his genuine friendship and guidance. You know, we've had some pretty, some pretty good conversations and, and I feel like he kind of, um, has a way of leading you to good decisions, especially on a personal level, and so I'm thankful for that. Uh, Rick, you are definitely the most lighthearted, fun person to be around. Um, you know, your, your family is amazing and, and you're just a lot of fun to be around and lift up this council. Uh, Sean, I, you know, I always tell you, if, if you need to know anything, you can go to Sean, he'll like encyclopedia. Um, but the thing that, that I will miss the most is your ability to bring us all together. You have this just innate ability to sit back when we're divided on things and just kind of put everything in perspective. And you, you are absolutely amazing, an amazing leader in that regard. Um, Steve Douglas, your time and effort with everything that you've done in the last eight years along with the other council. But one thing that you've definitely taught me and that I see in you is the passion and the issues that you have. And do not lose that passion, that is definitely one of your greatest traits, so.
Thank you.
I just, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Huesman?
Thanks, sir. Um, to Steve Davis, I hope you were watching, or at least have an opportunity to, uh, see this video after it's all done and see the kind words that everybody has to say about you. You were a good addition to the council. I'm glad that we appointed you back in August two thousand eighteen. Uh, I will miss working with you, but I'm glad to know that we'll still be neighbors. To Mr. Teeter, want to thank you for everything. You've always been a voice of wisdom. Um, want to thank your family, especially for your commitment to Commerce City. Uh, it's crazy to think twenty-four straight years to have a Teeter on council. And it just goes to show that just everybody in your family is committed to making sure that Commerce City can, can be truly what it is. And I thank you, as well as your entire family, for that dedication. Steve, uh, we didn't always agree on a lot of issues. Um, however, I, I thank you for always providing your input and never being afraid of saying what was in your heart. Um, you know, when I first got elected to council, Steve sits next to me here, he helped me a lot. Um, you know, there's that, uh, path that got built from King Supers up to, uh, the crosswalk over there on Chambers. And, uh, one evening I'd come to Steve and I said, hey, you know, I want to use some additional money that we're going to save on a contract to get that done. And, and Steve's the one that encouraged me to bring that forward to the council. And, uh, without that encouragement, I probably would have just shied away from that one, that path wouldn't be built. So, I do appreciate the mentorship that you've provided throughout the last two years and wish you nothing but the best. Uh, Sean, um, you leave incredibly large shoes to fill. And I'll be honest and tell you that for the last month, I've wondered if my size nine and a half feet are going to fit those shoes. There's a lot of, uh, a lot of fear I have that it won't, I'm going to be honest. Um, you've, uh, you've done great things for Commerce City. Um, you've been involved for, I mean, jeez, as long as, almost I've been alive, probably, so. Um, you know, you're, it was funny, I was sitting in the room back there and I thought, well, it's easy to see why, you know, Sean keeps getting reelected with all the family members out there that just keep plugging votes for him. You know, but, uh, but you've always had your family by your side. And, uh, you know, I will tell you, my parents are watching, uh, um, from their home down in Texas. I will tell you, my dad, um, just thoroughly enjoys you. Um, loved whenever they came up for Tristan's birthday party and met you at the Rotary Trap Tournament. And, uh, truly just, you know, great person, um, you know, throughout the entire process, always asking me, you know, if I've talked with you and gotten advice from you. And, and, uh, so he has a lot of respect for you, just as much as I do. So, thank you for everything you've done for the city. I hope to see Sean Ford Parkway signs up on Highway two yet. I'm a little disappointed those haven't been posted yet. Um, I think somebody knows who I'm talking to about that, but I think that that's a, a fitting honor. And I'm glad that we were able to do that for you, because you truly did make that road happen for everybody. And even though the speed limit isn't quite where it needs to be, it's still, it's still a testament to the hard work that you did for the city. So, thank you, and I, I, again, you leave incredibly large shoes to fill and I hope that I can be half the mayor that you've been.
Thanks, Ben. Mr. Wardiowa?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, well, for Steve Davis, um, I always tell people when they ask me about Steve, um, he's just a good dude. Um, he is very level-headed and, uh, always provided a good balance to a lot of the issues, um, when I would talk to him outside of council, so he will be missed. Um, and he was a good addition. Uh, Steve Douglas, you know, he was the first council member I, I got to know. And I was very, uh, uh, I was honored and blessed when he was telling me, well, you should try to run for city council, he'll say, I was like, no. You know, um, then I looked into it and I was like, oh, two meetings a, a month, I could do that. I work for, I'm an educator. Then I got elected and we had to sit on boards, we have to do study sessions, and I'm thinking, thanks, Steve. But, um, your passion, man, um, we're, we're very alike with our passion. And I think that's something, uh, to say about an individual. Keep it and always go, even though you're not up here, um, we talked about, you know, sometimes out there you have more power than up here. And that's where that passion comes. So, thank you, Steve. Ricky Teeter, man, the legend, right? I, I've only heard about Rick Teeter and then I got to serve with him. Uh, went to school with some of his nieces, lived behind another one. And I've overheard about Rick Teeter and the hype is true, right? He does like to party. Um, and he makes it fun. He makes it fun, even the hard, hard decisions and the hard items we had to go, we would always find a laugh. And I appreciate all the, the wise words that, uh, you gave me, um, and, and the others. And then Sean Ford, man, um, I only knew about Sean Ford. Growing up here since nineteen eighty-three, we always heard about Sean Ford. When I was working for the district, he was our keynote speaker and his speech was hilarious, man. I'm like, I got to meet that guy, uh, because he was talking about sleeping in Mr. Rolla's, uh, classroom like we all did. And it was just a, 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 a cool speech. Um, and then I got to, and then I won and I got to serve. Um, he's a walking history book for Commerce City. And that's something that we're going to have to really go back and talk. Um, I always tell him, and I'm a reader, Sean, you need to write a book. Because sometimes when we don't know where our history or what our history was in Commerce City, we lose it or we won't make those decisions based off of that. And the core city and Commerce City, um, has rich history. Uh, I always tell folks, and I live up in the northern range, but I grew up down in the core city. My parents moved here in nineteen eighty-three. And that's a pride thing for me, because I come see my, my father and my grandparents, my nan and uncles, and it's awesome that we see the culture, the traditions. Um, and that's a challenge that our new council is going to have to have. And it's a challenge that we had to bridge, but Sean Ford really did that well. Sean Ford really spoke about the old Commerce City and now the new Commerce City moving forward as one. Um, but, you know, thank you for the mentorship. Uh, I, I thought myself, when I was like, okay, you know, we, we, we do disagree on different things, but it was always cool to get a text from Sean, always cool to talk to Sean. Um, and as a leader, you got to respect that when it comes to you. And every time, how's your son and how's your wife? That's what it's about. And so, I, I, I appreciate your service to Commerce City, right? Um, and, uh, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Hey, you know, your light's not on, but I'll call on you. Craig? You're all right.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to all you guys. You know, I, I've been on council for six months, got appointed six months ago. And, um, you know, you obviously come in gung ho, ready to go, and it's a lot more than you ever expected. And so, um, for each and every one of you, whether you're staying or going, you know, I appreciate all of you guys taking me under your wing, um, teaching me the ropes, you know. That had a lot to do with why I ran and why I decided I wanted to try to stay on council, because, uh, it's not always easy, like we talked about. It's a lot, it's a big, huge commitment, um, for your family, for your day-to-day life. But, um, it was an honor serving with you guys while you're here. It taught me quite a bit on, uh, just how to be a leader in the city, um, how to make it through some of the tough decisions, some of the tough, um, items that we have to discuss and make, make big decisions on. And so, um, you know, I'd reiterate what everybody said, you know, Teeter always kept it fun. Uh, S- Steve would always give me the perspective that I was missing, um, that we'd have, we'd have good conversations. Um, and, and Sean, uh, definitely took me under his wing and, and taught me quite a bit about the city's history and, and what it, what it means to be a leader up front. And so, I appreciate all of that. And Steve Davis, uh, Steve and I still talk regularly, a great guy. Overall, I, I had a pleasure working with him, because again, he's another guy that gave me good perspective. Um, you know, where we didn't agree on everything. And, and so, listening to him and having good thorough conversations about, uh, decisions that we're going to make moving forward, gave me the peace of mind and made me feel comfortable with my decisions moving forward, even if it wasn't the same, um, decision he was going to make. And so, I appreciate everybody's, uh, commitment to this city. Uh, it is, you guys were great role models for me, all of you. And so, I appreciate that and I, I hope to do, do you proud in the next four years.
Thanks, Greg. All right, I'll turn it back over to Mr. McBroom.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. If, uh, Mayor Ford, Mayor Pro Tem Teeter and Mr. Douglas would meet me on the stage, we have some, some modest gifts, gifts to show our appreciation.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Brian McBroom. I'm the city manager for the city of Commerce City. Uh, you've heard a lot already tonight about the professional accomplishments of these fine gentlemen. Uh, so I won't reiterate those things. Uh, storytime is for later tonight, I have plenty of stories. We share a lot of stories together. I want to take a moment and, and thank them on a personal level. Uh, these are the last three council members that served on the city council almost eight years ago now, and they took a chance on me. They gave me an opportunity to be the city manager of this great city. Uh, and I'm so personally thankful for that. Uh, I'll be honest, there are times I curse them for that. Uh, but mostly, I'm very thankful to them for that opportunity. Uh, and along the way, tremendous coaching and mentoring to help me not only do my job better, but to be a better man. Uh, these three gentlemen embody what it means to be strong and what it means to be kind. Uh, they are great, um, terrific, um, examples of that. Um, every time, and we spent a lot of time together over the last eight years, every single time, uh, these fellows greeted me with a, a warm handshake and, and a smile, regardless of what was going on in the city, regardless of these circumstances. Uh, of course, I'm especially grateful to Sean. Um, the council that took a chance on me was, was led by Sean. I didn't deserve that opportunity and, uh, I'm so, uh, I'm so grateful for that. Thanks, Brian. All right, we have some very modest tokens of the city's appreciation for their years of service. Uh, they're, they're modest, it's simply impossible to say, uh, to thank these gentlemen for their contributions to the community. They're, uh, the true thanks comes in the legacy that they leave behind. Um, I learned a phrase many years ago called, uh, the, the notion of standing on the shoulders of giants. Uh, these three men are without a doubt giants. And the next council gets the opportunity to stand on their shoulders and accomplish great things to continue advancing this city. So, the modest gifts we have, we have the same three things for, for each of you. Uh, this, this won't be a big, uh, a big shock. Let me just hand these, geez, we can, uh, so they are each council member's parking sign, uh, uh, a small collage with some photos to help them remember, uh, their, their time here at the city. Uh, we hope that brings back fond memories and, uh, helps you, uh, not think about the difficult times. It's impo- It's impossible to understand for any of us what it's like to be an elected official unless you've been one, but hopefully, these help you remember the happy times. We also have cards to help remind you of your privileges as a council member who served at least... Whoops. Did I give you the wrong one? So, as folks may not know, council members who served more than five years on city council get access to the city's wonderful amenities, and their families do as well. Certainly, again, very modest expressions of the city's appreciation for your service. So, hang those somewhere where they'll bring back fond memories of the city. We also have one additional item for Mayor Ford. It's right in front. If somebody could hand that up? If you would bring that up and hand that to Mayor Ford, maybe he can open it while he's here on the stage, so everybody can see what it is. It's a shadow box with Sean's gavel. So, thank you, gentlemen, for your service. I look forward to telling some stories later on tonight.
Well, I'll tell you what, if it was anybody else's kids crying, I would have gavelled them down a long time ago. Just so you know, I would not tolerate that if it wasn't my grandkids. They would have been, they would have been out in the hallway, so thank you for putting up with it, but my last meeting, they can cry all they want. All right. Next item, Mr. Huesman. Do you have something you'd like to say?
Well, thank you, Mayor. You know, I've said before, and it is true, that the highlight of my professional career, the biggest honor, has been to be a councilman in Commerce City. And it's for a good reason that I get to do this, and want to thank you and your support for the last two years, but I officially resign my council seat.
Thank you, Ben, and that will leave that vacancy available. And you had to make that seat vacant to be able to accept your position as mayor elected by the people. With that said, I would like to adjourn this meeting to the organizational meeting of the new city council of Commerce City. So, we are adjourned, and we have the swearing-in of the new members. We'll start with, yes? Yep, absolutely. I'll give you all the time you want. Come on up, Judge. This is the part where I've always wanted to say, "Here come the judge." Come on up, Judge. I didn't think I'd ever get a chance to say that again, so I figured as you're coming down the middle aisle, I better take advantage of it. I'm showing my age, I guess.
Testing.